How's this gonna play out? Do you want me to just introduce Eric Jensen and have him kind of take it over from that point?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. All right, I'm glad you all made it tonight. It looks like we got a full house now. Everybody's on board. And Eric, it's good to see you again. And like Katie said, the packet looked really good, so I'm quite impressed. So if you want to just kind of run with this and just kind of fill us in on on some of what the idea behind this all is and where we're at, that would be great. And I'll just hand it over to you.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you, Mayor, and it's great to see the whole council. I know I've talked to some of you, and I know Amelia has talked to some of you. So the purpose of the session tonight is we had sent you a candidate profile and hiring process because what we're looking from you is is for your approval of both documents, we need to get you to adopt both of these formally in a regularly council session. And the reason is a couple of things. One is, in order for you to be able to hold executive session on this recruitment process going forward, you need to develop this prevent this position profile and the hiring procedures. And and have that and have public review. And so that's the reason that one that we interviewed all of you as well as city staff, but we also put it out for community comment as well. And so there was an opportunity for community input. We actually held a community input Zoom session. So that fulfills the not only fulfills the obligation, but it also gives us some important information about what the community is looking for. So secondly, with the candidate profile, we use that as kind of our holy grail, if you will, to set the criteria that we are going to use to evaluate the candidates from from the beginning through the end. And so that that will establish the criteria that we use with the applications. It will establish the criteria that we use with the semifinalist interviews and with the finalist interview. So it's helpful for us to be able to get that from you, and we understand what you're looking for and that we are helping to fulfill that. Fulfill that the attributes that you want the next city manager. So the the other thing, I just want to mention, we put a cover memo in there. So you've gotten the government memo and then appendix B, A and B, the position profile and the hiring procedures. So in putting together the position profile, excuse me, we did the interviews that I mentioned. So I was 10 one-on-one interviews that Amelia and I did. And that included the seven members of the council and then three staff. We did a survey also of staff members online, and we had nine responses from staff. The community survey, we had 21 responses on the community survey. That included 16 people who are residents, seven people who owned businesses or worked or were employed in the in the city, and then four people who were outside the city within five miles. And then with the community reception, I believe we had six people that attended that. So so let me walk you through the document if I if I may. And so the first thing we're going to take a look at here is the appendix A that we sent out to you. And that's the city manager profile. Now, one of the things that we do initially is we also set minimum education experience. So as the applications are coming in, if they don't meet those qualifications, we don't rate them. So those qualifications include a bachelor's degree plus three years of upper level local government experience. And what we mean by that is anybody who has been a city manager, assistant city manager, or department head is considered to be upper level or an equivalent in a in another type of local government. The preferred qualifications are those that would be nice to have. They're not required to have them, but we we give them points for if they do. And that includes an advanced degree, a master's degree, as well as a five years of increasingly professional experience, and also if they have experience in some of the key areas such as human resources, public finance, infrastructure management, those are things that we would also give points for. Then we have the attributes, and the the attributes are are those that we put together based on all this information. And the first one we have is leadership and management. You want to have an experienced manager. You want somebody who has the ability to to manage multiple departments and balance priority initiatives, develop and inspire staff, and foster an environment that's professional, high functioning and responsive. You're also looking for someone who has the ability to help the organization envision, plan, and address long-term growth. And this is particularly important in in your city where you are experiencing such tremendous growth. For someone to be able to come in and to help to to think about the steps ahead that you need to take to address that growth is is going to be important. We also heard that you want somebody who's going to value and practice teamwork, collaboration, transparency, and inclusivity. And that and we heard that you want someone who's going to be supportive of the staff, which is good management practice. And the other thing that we heard as part of this particular attribute is somebody who's going to be respectful of all the viewpoints. You have a lot of diverse viewpoints within staff, within the council, and within the community, and being able to respect all those viewpoints is important. And we mentioned that human resource management and workforce development experience is helpful. Communication, we heard this a lot. We heard this with regard to how important it is to have the communication skills to talk to the multiple audiences that a city manager is has to work with. So that's everybody from staff to the council, to vendors, to the community, and being able to engage all of those folks. But being able to do it in a way that is accurate, is neutral in its presentation, and has the ability to translate complex issues. So to that end, that communication style should be one that's accessible, transparent, open, accurate, and and timely when communicating with people. And the communication should be both verbally and written in a way that's clear, substantive, and concise. Community engagement is another area that we heard as important. And you you have an expectation that the city manager needs to be engaged and visible in the community, not somebody who's going to just come to work and then go home, but somebody who's going to be out there and engaged and participating in meetings and is going to be about town in terms of 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 being a visible city leader. So the other the other thing is that you want them to be accessible, open-minded, and employ an even-handed approach. And this kind of goes back to what I was saying before in terms of being open-minded and hearing all viewpoints and being able to work with a diverse population. But you also want to make sure that this person is going to be not only maintaining the outreach that you already have, but that it's that this person is going to be strengthening the opportunities and finding new ways to get out and engage the public. Public finance came across as something very strong that you're looking for that in this person, somebody who has strong finance skills, and somebody who takes a comprehensive financial planning approach, someone who's going to look at the entire financial picture from from revenues to expenditures and understands what the city's long-term financial needs are going to be and being able to address those going forward. And you with a lot of the funding that that's out and available and that's going to be coming in, including the ARPA funds, that they be able and ready to to address those sources and to utilize those sources. And then lastly, someone who is going to integrate the financial planning that they're doing with the city's vision, the council goals, policy direction, and if possible, somebody who knows Oregon budget law. I think many, if not all of you know, that Oregon has unique budget law and requirements. And so somebody that already has that experience will will be a benefit. Public infrastructure, this was a big one. With particularly around, we heard a lot about the wastewater treatment plant. And that is first and foremost on your infrastructure list. And in terms of addressing the growth that you that you are experiencing and will continue to experience. And so having somebody who really understands public infrastructure, what it means to plan for it, what it means to maintain it, to construct it, and to fund it is going to be very important. There are going to be other public infrastructure needs that are going to be coming up, including relating to streets and streets planning and dealing with some of the county-owned roads and getting your TSP updated and also looking at expanding your multimodal access opportunities will also play into this. So having somebody who has that sort of strong understanding of public infrastructure is going to be key. Council relations. With regard to the the city council, you folks want somebody who's going to be responsive to every council I've worked with. They want that. So I was glad to see that you weren't any different on that front. But you know, someone who's going to be accessible, inclusive of all the council and support your work, somebody who's going to help you do your job and keep you apprised of the operations of the city, keep you apprised of what your legal obligations are, and helping to facilitate the decision-making processes that the council has by providing the information that you need to make decisions, understanding what the community wants, and doing it a way that is collaborative with council and at the same time promoting group cohesion among the council members as as much as possible. So then moving on down the intergovernmental relations, you have a number of relationships with jurisdictions that you're contracting with, the sheriff's office and 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 fire and so forth. So you need somebody who understands how to manage those intergovernmental relationships and somebody who knows how to negotiate new or refined effective service agreements as it relates to those entities that are providing the services. And then in addition to that, looking at how you are partnering up with your your juris other jurisdictions, whether it's a state, whether it's a county, whether it's other jurisdictions of the federal government. When you need to take on projects that are going to be intergovernmental in nature and have intergovernmental components, be they infrastructure or just dealing with regulatory requirements. Next on the list is the is diversity and inclusion and the Estacada council, you folks recognize the importance of advancing diversity, equity, and inclusion as a central part of public process and decision-making in the city. You have established a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. And so having somebody who embraces the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and is prepared to help the the committee and and others in terms of finding ways to craft operational policy approaches to forward these principles is going to be important and beneficial to the city. Then appreciation for Estacada. I find this with just about every city we've worked with, they they want somebody who's going to appreciate their community for what it is. And you're no different. And it's and that is says a lot about the community because it shows a great deal of community pride that you folks have. And one of you was was talking to me about just how everybody just kind of chips in when when things are down and that doesn't matter kind of where you're coming from politically or where you are in life. You folks are in it for the community. And so you want a city manager who's going to appreciate that that strong sense of community and become invested in the community, again, going back to that sort of high visible role that they would play in the community and and be engaged with the community. Understanding government roles is is important in terms of understanding the council manager form of government and the and the roles that that follow with council manager form of government with with the council leading the policy and of of the city and with the city manager carrying out the policy through the operations of the city. And of course, responding to the community. Then community and economic development is also important to you in terms of you've got all this growth that's happening. Somebody who understands Oregon land use is going to be particularly helpful in this area. But what what you also are looking for is someone who is prepared to deal with the comprehensive nature of growth. And being able to reach out and bring together the different components of growth and help move that forward and prepare the city for. All right. So that's those are the attributes. And then also as part of this document are the policy directives. And this is also called for in Oregon law that we put this in here. So we highlighted some of the the policy directives that we heard from all of you are important. Infrastructure just pops right out. The wastewater treatment plant, we heard from everybody about the wastewater treatment plant. That is first and foremost. Moving forward in terms of infrastructure is going to be important in the next five years. And so the next city manager is going to have to help to move that that project forward. You will have other opportunities for infrastructure improvements, including the new water reservoir that's been funded. And there's going to be decisions around property acquisition, design, construction. And so the the next city manager is going to be important in terms of championing those efforts and helping to facilitate moving them forward. Then we have long-term growth plan management plan. I was talking about that at the end of the attributes. That the city with its unprecedented growth and and we heard about how the projections for your city by by PSU were not accurate, and you've been exceeding the projections. And so that population growth is anticipated to continue. And so you'll need somebody who can respond in the short term with the infrastructure improvements that you need with the wastewater treatment plant and the water reservoir. But also to to look further ahead and use things like the housing needs analysis that you're doing to figure out where are you going as a city? And getting the new community development department off the ground, staff, and into this conversation with regard to growth. And then the the ability to work with you as a council to comprehensively address the broad growth impacts that are going to be coming your way, be it infrastructure, housing, public safety, and other services, and coordinate that growth planning. So that's that's going to be important. So that then public safety is another piece that we heard about. And that comes in a few different forms. One is, given the natural disasters that have happened in the fire, most notably, that you have safety priorities that go along with that. And how do you address that type of situation again, when you've got ingress and egress to the city that's limited? So there are infrastructure needs around that type of safety and preparing for emergency management services to meet your public safety needs. And then also on the day-to-day emergency services, being able to expand those services, working with the sheriff's office to be able to expand the service to meet the continuing needs of your community for public safety. And then we have finally the community park and beautification projects. Those were brought up quite a bit with us. And so we understand you have a number of beautification initiatives that will need to be carried forward by the next city manager, including the Wade Creek renovation, the the Capinella Park Estates Development Splash Pad, as well as looking at building a community room and establishing an operational funding agreement with the with the library district. And then in addition, that increasing lakeshore access and visibility we heard about, and the street beautification projects on May are also part of that. So all of these things, these policy initiatives are ones that you're anticipating that the next city manager is going to be working on, helping to champion, helping to facilitate and move forward. That was our that was our takeaway on the candidate profile. And I'm going to stop there for a moment and see if you have any comments.
All right. Thank you, Eric. That was very, very good. Are there any comments from the council on what he said so far? Are there anything that you think needs to be added or or maybe something we've left out?
He hit all my hot, hot topic, hot button topics. I mean, just but just about everything I said in my interview has made this list, and that's awesome. I appreciate that.
Good, good. Joel?
I was reading through it, and I was trying to find where one of the things I'd mentioned during that interview was community nonprofit engagement. I mentioned that during the interview that I want to make sure that our city managers much more involved with like our like food bank for local nonprofits that are doing events in the city that are assisting people responding to, you know, like responding to emergencies, whatever it might be, because there are a whole variety of groups there. And I want to make sure that that's somewhere that's noted and know that they have to be more proactive and engaged with those groups. Because I think it's absolutely critical, and I think we're missing that as a city of being engaged with those groups. And so someone that's that has it in their core, you know, the kind of core foundation is something that they that they do on a natural basis would be something that's important to me. So because I believe that those nonprofits are part of what makes our city run. So.
Wouldn't that fall under community? I think you mentioned you're reaching out to the community. Wouldn't that be associated in that same area? So.
That's what I was about to suggest is.
Community engagement, I just didn't feel like I touched on it enough to specifically identify working with working with those nonprofits that work with the people on a kind of continual basis. That could be from anywhere from, you know, checking to see if they if they have, you know, put in for our annual grants, seeing if there's events that are going and helping them to facilitate events, community, getting those those groups connected with different different committees in our in our city to make sure that they're trying to work together, and there's not double work happening, kind of basically facilitating that. Like I said, that there there's different groups from the church groups up to like Estacada Community Watch, to the food bank. All these guys do these normal events throughout the city throughout the year. And sometimes they're either stepping on each other's toes because they're they don't communicate very well. So they're having a city manager that can help facilitate that and working with the city. And also, when we have like the town, town, Estacada Commission, we have the 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 business one. Anyways, we have all these different things that we work with as a city that it just seems like there's a lot of, you know, crashing into each other sometimes. I've noticed over the last couple of years. And so having the city manager that can help facilitate that would really help. At least have that some of the something that they're that they like to work on.
I agree. Paul, you have something?
Oh, I'm sorry. I raised my hand. I'm not on camera, but I did have my hand raised while he was saying that. I do want to read the first line from the communication attribute. "It is imperative the city manager possess strong communication skills to effectively engage multiple city audiences, including the city council, staff, local government officials, businesses, community groups, and citizens." Why don't we just throw nonprofits in there too?
We can do that.
Yeah. Community groups.
All right, Paul, go ahead.
Oh, that that helps. What Katie said helps. I agree with that. And otherwise, I think altogether, things look very good on this.
Okay, so we will go ahead and add nonprofits under communication after community groups. That's all right.
That's just fine. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions before he moves on? No? Okay, take it away.
Okay. So with that that change, we'll look at the hiring process. But I will tell you that the hiring process appendix B is really a reiteration of what was in our proposal. So I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, but I will review it just quickly here. So we have taken it from the standpoint of the position advertisement. And the so we'll start with the once we have the profile developed, we are going to develop a brochure. And the brochure is going to reflect all the attributes that we just went through, the requirements that we just went through. But it will also include a description of the community. And as you recall, in our in our questions, we asked you about, you know, what's what's great about Estacada that we can use to sell? And so that's where that comes in in this particular element. So we will put together that brochure. We'll work with Denise on that. And get get that out. Now, the position advertisement is scheduled to begin November 29th and and on December 24th. We normally run it for four weeks. So we'll get it right up to Christmas Eve. And so they can get their application in, and then they can enjoy the holidays. So the the next stage is once the applications come in, we will review them and apply them against the criteria that we've just talked about. There will be three people who will evaluate them, and all of us are former public administrators. So we we will review them, rate them, and then we will come up with a list of about 10 10 candidates that we would slate to be semifinalists. At that point, we will interview those 10 finalists. we will interview those ten finalists by Zoom. And we will we'll interview them by Zoom and then we'll come back together, we'll rate them. And use those ratings to identify those that we would recommend as finalists for your process. Now, at that point, we come back to you. And we report back on all of the people that we interviewed. And so we will come back to you in executive session. We will have notebooks, so we need to do it in person. That have all the application materials of those people that we interviewed. We will also have done internet research on all of these individuals. That will also be included in your briefing books as well as the background materials for the recruitments, the brochures and other materials that go along with it. At the executive session, we will present those, we'll walk through each of the candidates we interviewed, what our impressions were of each of the candidates. We will give you our recommendations for up to four finalists. And then it's up to you during that meeting if you would like to accept the recommendations or if you if there's somebody else who want to have in the mix, which is fine. And this is this is your city manager. So we'll we'll go whatever direction you want to go. We will, by the way, when we're rating candidates, we we also apply the Oregon Veterans Preference Law. And so anybody who is a veteran will be interviewed if they meet minimum qualifications. And they also receive extra points. So we normally do a hundred point scale on the ratings and then we'll add another five points. If they're a veteran, another ten points if they're disabled vet. So and that's all in accordance with Oregon law. So once you have agreed to the finalists, we'll make sure they're willing to go public. And at that point, that usually takes about forty eight hours. And at that point, then we'll prepare a press release for the city to send out on the four finalists. And we will begin a process of background checks. We do reference checks. We ask them to give us four references. One of a elected official that they've supported, one of a subordinate who has reported directly to them. And two other professional references of their choice. In addition to that, we work our networks and we were very well connected in the city manager community. And we have the ability to get out and to do some informal reference checking as well, which we do. We also do background checks. We have a firm that does background checks for criminal employment and education verification and credit. And as well as civil litigation and that that they may have filed. And so we will get that information. From the time that we have that executive session with you on the semifinalist to the finalist week is about three weeks. And we need those three weeks to do the background check, the reference checks, but we also use that time to prepare for the finalist week. And the finalist week starts off with a reception, two receptions on usually on the Tuesday of that week. And we'll do a reception with staff and then we'll do a reception with community. And we will have surveys at the receptions. If it's online, we will do that. We'll have an online survey they can respond to. If it's in person, we'll have a hard copy that they can respond to on site and and they rate people by how well they think this the person is a fit for S T K. The next day on the Wednesday, we do panel interviews. We will do a panel of administrators, other city managers or special district managers or other public administrators who understand what it is to do this kind of job. And we will bring them in and have them do interviews with all the finalists as well as a group of community leaders. Up to six people that we would also have. Now, when we do the panel interviews and then we we in cities that are large enough, we will do department head panels as well. And we'll run those all during the Wednesday afternoon and the candidates will go in between each of the interviews. We will have moderators at each of the panels so that nobody's asking questions that they shouldn't ask. And to kind of help set the format, but the questions will all be asked by the panelists. And the moderator will gather all the information and the impressions at the end, as well as get them to fill out rating forms. The next day is the day that city council interviews candidates. Now, I want to backtrack for just a second with the receptions. We with the community reception, we encourage council to attend the community reception because we want you to to be there to observe. How do the candidates interact with the community? And so it's less about you asking them questions during that particular format, but more about just seeing how they interact and getting an impression of that. So by the time you get to the the interview, you will have seen them at least once. And the interviews are longer for the council. We do an hour and a half block. And we will also moderate that. I will be present, help moderate it. And we will have structured questions. So everybody's asked the same questions, but we will allocate time for other questions to be asked at the end. And at the end of that day, usually it takes pretty much a full day for the council to get through four interviews and an hour and a half each. We go home, we all go home and we come back the next day. And on the Friday, we do a deliberation session, executive session with you folks. The first, it goes in three parts. The first part, I will be asking you about your impressions from the interviews the day before and getting those. Then we will download a plethora of information. Because we will have written summaries of the receptions, written summaries of the panel interviews. And we will also have the background check information as well as the reference check information. So we will share all of that with you after after you've shared your impressions from the interviews. And then following that, I normally will facilitate a deliberation process to help you get to the point of selecting the person that you think is the best fit. So that's probably more than you wanted to know, but once I get going, it's kind of hard for me to stop. So any questions about that?
Okay, I've seen Joel.
You said that the candidates will be asked a series of questions and it'll be pre-screened questions or something like that. Who comes up with those questions? Is that you or do we as a council get to determine those questions that we'll be asking them?
We prepare the questions, but we encourage you to share with us any types of information that you would like to get out of the interviews. So that we can structure the questions, make sure that we get that get that information for you.
Is it possible that you can send those questions to the council at a time so we can review them? And maybe recommend changes or things that we'd like to ask instead?
No, it's not because we are very vigilant about confidentiality and making sure that the questions do not get out prior to the interviews. We won't release those until the morning that we meet with you. But like I said, if you have things that you would like to know about, then please tell us and we will do our best. In our experience, the councils that we have worked with have found our questions be very thorough and tailored toward their particular communities.
All right, Katie?
Actually, along the same lines of what Council like he was just asking about, under the initial application screening, it says that you'll be providing a questionnaire, a recruitment questionnaire. Is it possible for us to get a preview of that questionnaire that applicants will be asked to fill out?
Oh, the supplemental questionnaire?
Yeah.
Absolutely. And in fact, as soon as we we put it on our website, it's on our website too. So you can also look at it, but we're happy to send it to you. So let me just tell you what's on that, though. One of the things that we found over the years as we've done these recruitments is that when candidates submit a cover letter or resume, they don't always share apples to apples. So in other words, we don't, we didn't know how many people did they supervise, how big a budget did they manage? And so the supplementary form is meant to bring some consistency to the to the application. And we asked them for the last five positions. How many people they supervise, what was the largest community or what was the size of the community they were supporting? And what size of budget that they that they manage with those jobs? That way we can compare the candidates and apples to apples and along those lines. The other thing that's in those supplemental forms are two questions. One question is have you ever, have you been try and remember the exact wording and I apologize, I'm going to paraphrase here, but have you ever been terminated involuntarily? And if so, we ask them to explain that involuntary termination. The other thing we ask is about any accusations of misconduct. And if they have had none, not necessarily a conviction, but just any accusations of misconduct. And if they have, we ask them to explain that. And the reason we do this is when we go through and we do internet searches, sometimes we come up with things that have been in the paper and we all know that it's not always accurate what's in the paper. And so we want to be fair to the candidates and give them an opportunity to explain that particular situation. So that's what's in the supplemental form. But like I said, I'm happy to share with council.
Um, I do have one more question if that's all right. Um, my last one. Under the two point eight finalist interviews, there is a number three, a panel of community members. How are those community members going to be determined? Are we going to appoint members of the community as a subcommittee of sorts or or are you going to be reaching out to certain members of the community who have participated in past surveys or how are those people determined?
Typically, what we do is we work with the acting city manager to identify the people that they think and 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 you may want to share with Denise, some of the folks that you think might might be good, but we look, what we look for is we look for people in the community who represent diverse interests. So you have a diverse, you have a a diverse group of folks, but also people who are respected in the community that represent their constituencies or their interests well. And so that's that's what we typically look for.
Good. Thank you, Joel.
And off of Katie, yes, I the council's questions are. I would really like to to have the council review those community members and approve them rather than our city manager. I think it's important being the fact is that the city manager is leading. And the council is going to be the one here working with that city manager that we should understand the people that are going to be interviewing, especially from the community. I think presenting those that list or those recommendations to the council for final approval would be a stage I think would be important. So, and you know, or having the list that we can choose from rather than the city manager.
Eric, is that something that is done or is that not something we would?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Our our preference is that we have one point person that that shares that information. Now, that doesn't mean that Denise can't work with you and find out, get you folks to agree on who who's on it. But in our experience, if we get into sort of a back and forth with individual council members, it eats up a lot of time. And what we would recommend is if you're agreeable for Denise to work with you to get us a list.
Joel, you got another question?
Uh, yeah, Denise is on here. Can we set a meeting around the time when this is for us to as a council to get together with you? And we can finalize that list for Eric that you can send over to him. So like a one hour workshop or something for us to kind of come over the list of people that are that have maybe been showing interest or something and then we can all select them together.
Yeah, I think what I'd ask is that each of you send me two people that you would suggest. And hopefully some of those people are the same. And then I could put a list together and send it out and we can try to come to an agreement.
Sounds good.
If i- if I could add to that, as you're thinking about those two people, think about people who are leaders in your community who other members of the community would feel comfortable making a recommendation with regard to a city manager candidate. And that they they represent certain interests in the community that are are prevalent to your community.
Thank you.
And also, I'm sorry, one other thing. We've had this, we've had this happen before, so I need to clarify this. We are going to be looking at at public administrators as well. We would ask that none of the people who are on the community panel are public administrators.
Fair enough. All right, some other questions?
How many people are you looking for on this this group?
We would like Denise, we would like a maximum of six.
Okay, so maybe if each counselor could send me one person that you would really like on this committee. And if we have some of the same, I'll let everybody know.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for Eric as we're moving along here? No? Okay, Eric, take it away.
All right, well, that that really covers it. You've got a schedule that's part of the the hiring process and that's that that shows you where we're at. The finalist week will be the week of January thirty first. So we would anticipate by the end of that week that at the deliberations, you will have picked your next city manager. And a negotiation.
Great. Well, Eric, you have done a great job and your staff has worked really hard. We appreciate everything that you're doing to help us get this right. Jerry, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just sitting here thinking about it. So city administrators, does that mean commission and committee members? We don't want to, you know, include them in this group. So like our arts commission, parks commission.
Counselor, that that is an excellent question. So when we talk about city administrators, we're talking about professional administrators. We're not talking about people who are on planning commission, parks commission and honestly, it's not uncommon for planning commissioner, parks commission or other other boards and advisory representatives to be on the community panel.
Good. Thank you. Did that answer your question? Jerry, you have anything else you want to add? Okay. As I was saying, we we appreciate all your staff and all the work you've been doing. I feel confident that you will come up with some really good candidates, so I'm really excited about this. I know that all the council is really excited about coming together and finding the right person for this. So in that, I thank you for tonight and filling us in on everything. And we look forward to continuing.
Great. We look forward to to working with you on this and we're very optimistic. We're going to be able to find you someone that that's going to fit as to Kada.
Okay, thank you, sir. And thank all of you counselors for coming out tonight and making this happen. It's really important that we continue on and get this done the right way. So I appreciate all of you making time for this. So thank you. And Sadie or Denise, is there anything else we need to do tonight before we shut this down?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I will see all of you at a later date. We appreciate you and thank you very much for joining in tonight.